Gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight for the April ninth, two thousand and fifteen workshop of the East Fishkill Town Board. Excuse us for being a little bit late. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to have our Architectural Review Board here with us. You're second on the agenda, I just want to warn you, so you're a little ahead, but please bear with us for a few minutes.
The Chair!
He cannot be late. That's fine, because I think we have a couple of matters to attend to in the meantime. First, under Supervisors' announcements, I would just like to make short announcement that a quick note of thanks for the good job at two calls this past week. First, a tractor trailer rollover accident on Interstate eighty-four with heavy equipment resulted in a patient with serious injuries. The second call was a house fire on Nicholson Road. Upon arrival, heavy fire in attic, the fire was contained to the attic and roof area, and it was considered excellent work at both calls. And that being said, I would just like to thank our volunteers, our volunteer firefighters, our first responders, they're volunteers of the highest caliber, and I'm very proud and thankful to have them, so I just wanted to mention their good work and thank them for that. Second announcement tonight in response to some concerned residents that contacted the Dutchess County Department of Health and County Executive's Office regarding dead minnows, a number of dead minnows in the local lake. D E C just put out this memo called "The Extended ..." A number of western New York ponds, and I think that this is probably what happened, experienced winter kill. Late ice contributes to natural phenomenon. The extended period of ice blanketed by deep snow is likely to result in fish die-offs in numerous area ponds, according to New York State D E C. As winter ice has started to melt away, they're receiving calls, and I believe that this was the issue that this local lake also experienced, "We're receiving calls from concerned pond owners reporting large numbers of dead fish in their ponds." In most cases, fish kills that become evident when the ice melts can be attributed to a national phenomenon, natural phenomenon known as winter kill. Winter die-off of fish or winter kill is caused by oxygen depletion in the water through the winter due to the ice that accumulates on the ponds and prevents wind action from adding oxygen to the water. So the calls that we had gotten, I think it was probably February, around the time of the beginning of the thaw, if it did begin to thaw, I'm not sure, I feel like we're still in winter yet, but I think that this is where we saw this fish issue, and I believe it was probably caused by this thing that the Department of Environmental Conservation refers to as winter kill. So we had some calls, and I contacted the County Executive's Office, I spoke with their people, and also with the Department of Health. That's my announcements for tonight, and with that, I'd like to open the work session. Do I have a motion? Well, we don't have to vote on this, it's a workshop. And let me explain a little bit about a workshop, but a town board workshop at a voting meeting is where we actually do our voting, and we have public participation, but as a workshop is really just a time where the boards can get together as a body and discuss matters of much importance to the town of East Fishkill. But there is no audience, no public participation at a workshop. So that's the difference between the workshops, it's called a workshop, the other one is a public meeting. Well, this is a public meeting, that's a voting meeting, so I don't have to open the meeting or anything like that, but just so that everybody knows, this is really for a meeting of the boards. And I will just point out why we have our Architectural Review Board here, was we did some interviews a while back for positions on our boards, and I was talking to the board members, they said, "Well, who are on our boards?" So we did this a few years ago, where the town board, we set up, and this is why we're a little cramped tonight, we set up to have our boards come in. So tonight, we have the Architectural Review Board here, I think minus Dave Bushy, who's been a longtime member and a very valued member of that board. So it's really nice to have this board come before us, and the chairman should be here before we get started, but it's really just for a time for the town board to meet everybody and get to know each other, and then be, if you will, on the same page. So we're a little cramped tonight, and I don't know what's going to happen, we have the planning board here, because we have even more members on the planning board, but we do thank you for being here tonight. But the first item on the agenda is on our MS ... it's an MS four presentation by our MS four coordinator, Walter Artis, and there's Walter in the audience. So Walter, why don't you come up and sit down at the chairman's chair, and you can be the chairman of the A R B for a few minutes.
There you go.
That's not a nice thing to say. Walter is our MS four consultant, MS four being municipal separate storm sewer, stormwater sewer, something like that. And it is a New York State acronym, it's also New York State law that we have to abide by, and Walter is the consultant that provides us with all of our MS four advice and consultation. And tonight, we have our annual report, is Stu?
Yes, well, the reason I requested to be on the agenda this evening was to inform the board that the East Fishkill Stormwater Management Program Annual Report for the reporting period March tenth, two thousand and fourteen, through March ninth, two thousand and fifteen is complete. There's a draft copy on the town website, I believe it went up on March seventeenth. This annual report is generally consistent with last year's annual report. One point I'd like to make out, we're still under the two thousand and ten permit, and it was to be a five-year permit. D E C did not come out with a new permit in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Due to a number of issues. They will be coming out with a new permit in two thousand and sixteen, so we'll likely have some enhanced requirements.
And when you say that they're coming out with a new permit, it basically means that New York State is going to enact more laws that come down to us on local level regarding stormwater management.
Very likely, there'll be some more enhanced requirements throughout, and then on top of it, you know we're in the East of Hudson, New York City watershed, so we'll probably hit with some additional items in that respect as well. However, they did issue a new general, Speedy's General Construction Permit effective January twenty-ninth of this year, and there are some very enhanced requirements in that, which also falls, you know, under this program as well, under Minimum Control Measure Number Four and Five.
When we talk about general construction guidelines, I remember not too long ago, I think the area of disturbance allowed was five acres years ago, and now it's one acre and reduced.
Now, in the East of Hudson watershed, it's five thousand square feet.
Yeah, so it's getting stricter and stricter as we ...
And so they did come out with a new general construction permit, if your planning board has not received it yet, they're going to be receiving a memo from your engineering consultant, the planning board. I worked with them on a memo that the town polling planning board.
Okay.
That outlines the significant changes in the construction permit, so the planning board has a good idea. I mean, there's some significant changes in the construction permit.
You know, Walter, I know we had had in the past, we've had presentations here where we had developers come in, planning board members from other towns, would we be interested in doing the same thing again this year?
We could do that, we are due for another ...
Yeah, I tell you, I think to bring the people that are affected, the developers, construction people, and the planning board people that have to administer it, I think it's a great thing to do, so everybody understands what New York State's requirements are.
Yeah, we could put together, you know, a brief PowerPoint presentation, you know, not too long enough, just to, you know, so people don't get bored, because it can be a boring topic at times, but ...
Stormwater? No, I know.
I get that all the time.
Yeah. No, and the thing with stormwater, I mean, as we come to understand more and more of stormwater and the impact it has on our waterways, you know, it's important to do things correctly, but, you know, you don't want to go, you know, unfortunately, New York State, they do have a tendency to get stricter and stricter and stricter.
Right, you want to establish measurable goals, that's the key.
Exactly.
And not go overboard or go in the wrong direction.
Exactly. So it is a very important topic, and it is actually New York State law, so ...
And I think the new construction permit is going to, you'll find in the long run, it's going to help with some of the flooding issues.
Okay.
I mean, they're addressing that issue with precipitation and runoff reduction, you're going to see larger footprints on some of the stormwater management facilities.
Yeah.
And more green infrastructure, so, you know, I think ...
To hopefully help alleviate some of the flooding issues that have experienced.
In the future, with army development, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody on the board have any questions for our stormwater consultant or our MS four consultant?
Yes, Mr. Artis, how would you rate East Fishkill's MS four's responsibilities? How well are we doing? What could we be doing better?
Well, we're certainly in compliance with our permit requirements, and I would say in general, from my experience, at least in Region Three of D E C, which is Dutchess County, Westchester, Putnam, Orange, Rockland, whatnot, the majority of the municipalities in Dutchess County are ranked on the top tier. The biggest issue is D E C, and we were audited in two thousand and ten, we got a satisfactory grade, which is the highest grade they give, but numerous municipalities in Westchester and Putnam County received unsatisfactory. So as a whole, we're doing very well, we were, you know, unfortunately, we got hit with some additional enhanced requirements with the East of Hudson watershed, but we met those requirements, we met those deadlines, we had to come out with an addendum or revision to our construction permit, we had to come out with a septic pump-out ordinance, we had to do a retrofit plan, and this was the final year of that. We actually got one year's grace period on that, since they did not come out with a new permit this year. And if you recall, it goes back a few years ago, remember we had that discussion with the town board, whether to join that bubble down below?
Yeah, and I'm glad we didn't.
And I'm glad we didn't either, but it really left us with East Fishkill, Beekman, and Dutchess County D P W.
Yeah.
And we ended up actually eight tenths of a kilogram shy of our goal.
What was that, the phosphorus reduction?
Phosphorus reduction.
Phosphorus reduction, yeah.
And I spoke with Robert Kapowski at the Albany office, who's in charge of that. To him, that was minor, he said, "If you can make it up, you make it up," and we will have to establish another five-year retrofit program, but they understand with just East Fishkill, Beekman, and Dutchess County D P W, there's just not that much to do.
Okay, well, good.
So we're going to kind of, we're going to have a meeting in a few months with them, and I don't think the retrofit program is going to be as intense as it was the first five years, because they just understand this.
There's not a whole lot you can do here.
There's not a whole lot we do up here. But overall, you know, we're doing well, I consult for a number of towns, and, you know, you're up there, your records are impeccable, you know, that's why I was able to complete this report as quickly as I was.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, any questions for our MS four consultants?
Yeah, Walter, I got a question. You said that they're revising some of the rules as far as the state and MS four regulations. Usually, who sits and who decides? How do they come around with the new regulations?
Well, you had a, you know, statewide, but it really, you know, it's the higher echelon up in Albany, the Division of Water that will come up with that. But what they typically do, I would expect, maybe mid to late summer, they'll issue a draft permit, there'll be a public comment period, and what they did last time, actually, they had about a half a dozen workshops, where you could go up there for a half a day and sit down at a table like this and just discuss it with them, and they were very receptive to any suggestions or clarification we had with what their draft came out with, so, you know, that's pretty much the process, and then that'll go up for public comment and ...
So the panel basically is combined of ...
It's all New York State D E C. But anyone is welcome to, I mean, and I'll provide that information to the town, you know, when they, if they did what they do in two thousand, two thousand and ten, excuse me, they will have a number of workshops on different components of the permit. I think I went to two or three of them the last time, and, you know, provided some input or requested clarification and ...
You know, the reason I ask that question is because they usually put out all these rules and regulations to safeguard a lot of the water in the watersheds that supplies water to New York City.
Right.
But we end up paying the cost, the taxpayers in our communities, so I would like to see some representations of local community members addressing the cost. I mean, we don't mind following the rules, but at the same time, it is costing us more.
I agree, we did have some enhanced requirements.
Yeah, but I think it would be up to our state representatives, actually. You know, we're talking D E C on a state level, I mean, obviously, all the local people can go up there, but I think it's really more up to our state representatives.
But I think, you know, what I spoke of previously, when I had some preliminary discussions with the liaison with D E C and D E P on this new, you know, the new retrofit program that we will have to get into, they're going to be really fairly lenient on us in Dutchess County, just because they do understand there's not a lot of land in East Fishkill, Beekman, and, you know, say, D P W's highway throughout that watershed area to do any kind of retrofit measures.
Yeah, I think, well, Westchester, I think, really, they were the counties, they had a lot of issues down there, so ...
Although we were mandated to enact the septic pump-out law.
The septic pump-out law. They dropped the construction threshold of five thousand square feet, we had to revise our construction ordinance, stormwater ...
So we're not totally ...
And we added the five-year retrofit plan, so ...
But we've been successful with that, we've only missed by ...
Yeah, like I said, we ended up eight tenths of a kilogram shy, and he said, "That's fine," you know, I mean, they've been very actually good in that respect.
Any other questions?
Well, the only comment I want to make again is, if you could keep us posted, because I think it's important for us to address the issue that we are committed to, you know, MS four reports and compliance with that, but it is costing the taxpayers and the community.
No question, it's an unfunded mandate.
And the beneficiaries, they have to share some of their experience.
And, you know, like I said, once I find out if they're going to hold those public sessions again, I'll certainly let you know, and I would be there myself, you know, for, you know, representing some of my towns, so.
Thank you.
Yep, I know County Legislature Horton and I went up to Albany last year on funded mandate, relief, mandate relief day, and, you know, we didn't come back with any reassurance that anything was really going to be done on that, and this is another unfunded mandate, is what it is, but it does have some good, some positive effects as far as the flooding issues and stuff, so. But thank you very much, Walter, anybody else on the board, any other questions?
No.
Any other questions, are we done? I'm just going to ask our next steps now, are we filed the annual report?
Yes, and what I would request is, I guess your town attorney would prepare a resolution for your next meeting.
Yeah.
The board authorizing you to endorse this.
Signing the report and send it up, okay.
Then we get it, it's due June first, so we're ahead of time.
Very good. Thank you very much, Walter, always appreciate your help with MS four.
Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any sign of the chairman? No chairman? That's a gift.
He's at the game.
Yeah, you see the empire with the ...
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, he's a baseball guy.
Oh, no kidding, had I known, had I known.
It was a tie, and overtime, whatever.
Let's skip over, John.
Okay, well, no, the board does, this is our ...
He's the one who's responsible for keeping you here, just so you know.
Yep. I would like to get started, if you don't mind, with our Architectural Review Board, just a little bit on the Architectural Review Board, and I'm not sure, you were established back in, and I forget what year, but the Architectural Review Board was established, we always had an architectural advisory, what's that?
West Virtue.
Was it eighty-seven, something like that? Yeah, yeah, it was an architectural advisory board back then, or a review board?
No, it was still an architectural.
I think it was architectural advisory, and then at some point, changed it to the review board in the nineties, I think, but ...
I can't remember which one.
But I know ...
We didn't start to get the architect until later.
Yeah, well ...
When we were there for a few years before it changed.
Well, I appreciate that, but you guys have been very, very valuable to the town, as, you know, all volunteers, we talked about our volunteers before, I talked about our firefighters, our first responders, but our board members too are so important to the town of East Fish for what you do, and it's a very important part of, especially with the review, Architectural Review Board, of, you know, trying to get East Fishkill to look like town you'd like to live in, the town you're proud of, and I think that's a very important thing, and I'd like to thank the board for all of their work, and some of you members have been on for quite some time, and I know we have a few new members, I know Sardarius and then John are new on the board, and I had a discussion with Paul Pesavento last year, the chairman, who's, what's he doing, coaching a game, umping a game?
In the park.
Okay, but we can't, but Paul and I've discussed, and again, I'm very thankful for all the work that you do. We had talked previously, we have the, your Architectural Review Board actually reviews architectural features of new buildings, buildings being renovated in certain, mainly commercial industrial type of areas, and not residential, but most of the other non-residential areas, and I know you put a lot of effort into that, but we had a work, our workbook, I think, and I spoke with Paul about this, I had asked him if your board would actually take a look in our workbook and update it, and maybe see if there's some things that we could change, because I believe the workbook was back in the late nineties, and I hope, you know, that everybody's okay with taking a look at that, looking at the new materials that are available, and updating that to newer standards, but I still think we want to keep the main thing in focus, is that we want the town to look good, we want the town to be a town that we're proud of, and of course, as it says in the rules for the Architectural Review, one of the guidelines also take into account the economic impact on the applicant, because, you know, it has to work for the applicant also, so, but I appreciate the board's efforts in these matters. I would just like to open this up to my board, and just have, you know, a discussion with these two boards, and if you have anything to ask anybody on the Architecture Review Board, please feel free. Anybody like to ask the A R B, any questions?
No, just a comment that I, does this work?
Is that working?
Yeah. Okay, well, I sit with Paul, I'm the liaison to planning and zoning, so I work with Paul hand in hand, and, you know, he's a very thorough chairman, as you all know, and I'm sure you learned a lot from him, and he has a lot of good ideas, and he brings your ideas that you tell him forward, and it does help the planning process along, and I'd just like to thank all of you for volunteering your time.
Any questions, any thoughts?
I'd like to thank you all for your service, we greatly appreciate it, and I haven't heard a lot of negative things come out of the Architectural Review Board, so you must be doing something right, so thank you.
Oh, I think we do a good job.
No, we're very happy with your work.
We try our best.
And we're also very happy to have a couple of new members on, which I think bring a lot to the board. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask the board, I have a task that I've been considering I want to bring to your board. Tonight, we're going to be talking a bit about the sign ordinance, we passed a sign ordinance probably two, three years ago, and I think it's, they've been the same sign ordinance for probably twenty years, we changed the sign ordinance about three, four years ago, and now we're looking at making some tweaking, some little changes to it, and one of the things that had come up in other towns, if you want to get us, there's the chairman.
There's the chairman.
There he is, Paul Pesavento.
Sorry, I didn't wait.
No, no, no problem, you had a very good excuse, I'm told. Paul, pleasure to have you here.
Well done.
You're just about done, you're just about done.
Paul's the new chairperson of the board, we just voted her in.
But I would just like to say, you know, we're very appreciative of the work that the A R B does, and I think you do a good job, and the fact that we're looking to update the manual, the guidelines from the old manual, I think that's a terrific thing, but I'm just about ready to ask the board for a new task, and I hope, I'm glad you're here. We instituted a new sign law about three, four years ago, and we're going to be making some changes to it, some tweaks in it, but one of the things that I've seen in other towns, if you want to get a sign in another town, if you want to get a sign here, you have to actually show the sign, the dimensions and everything, and get an application, have it approved, but there's other towns that have like workbooks of signs that are already accepted, so, and Tom, you've seen this in other towns, haven't you?
Yes.
Where you want to get a sign, but instead of going to a sign man and having all the sign, hoping it fits in with the town is looking for. I would like to put together like a manual of signs that we've established as signs that you could put up in the town of East Fishkill without, you know, that are more or less pre-approved. Do you think that is something that your board could take a look at with a little help from our professionals?
The sign issue has always been a problem with us, even since the time the, you might say, the inception of the board, even when it wasn't a board with a law enforcement, okay? One of the issues that we had way back then, and I think, I think Mrs. Ruschen can support me with this, is the fact that we were having difficulty when we would put signs on a building vis-à-vis putting the signs in terms of a marquee out in front of the building. We had input to put the signs on the building, but we had no input to put the marquee signs out, and we always felt as though that the marquee signs in the front of the building added to the aesthetics of the building just as well as the signs on the building added to the aesthetics of the building.
Right.
So therefore, there was some, you know, ambivalence with the board in terms of that situation, and the other issue that we have right now, that we're not really totally happy with, and concur or not concur, is that currently, right now, we have buildings where we have multiple color signs on the building.
Right.
And that, to me, just takes away from the aesthetics of the community, the aesthetics of what the building may look like.
Yeah.
And so therefore, yes, I think we'd like to be a part of that sign issue, and, you know, put it, have as much input as we possibly can to that sign condition.
Okay, very, very good, because, and I think looking at attractive signs, with signs that are consistent, signs that reflect well on the town of East Fishkill, as we all know, a sign is also a business's lifeblood, and sometimes a business will like a sign to stand out more than other signs, obviously, especially if there's competition, but we have to find that happy medium, that compromise, where it's going to be a sign that works for everybody. I did ask if you would be willing to work on maybe a workbook of sign set, maybe we'd look at, you can come in and say, "I like this sign," and with very little review, it'd be something we've already reviewed and accepted and be able to put it up. I actually asked our building department for a list of what they thought needed to be changed in our sign ordinance, and I got, I got, part of it, two days ago, I got the other part yesterday, there was a little part that was missing, I just burnt it up today, the board has a copy, everybody on the board just got a copy, and the changes that they proposed are in red. I also gave a copy to our town planner, Michelle Robbins, she's going to review it. So what I'd like to do over the next few months is take a look at these things, these issues that have come up about signs, and work together, and again, in the end, if we could come out with something to make it easier for somebody to look at a workbook and say, "You know, this is a sign I like to put on my building or out front of my business," and it was something that's pre-approved, it'd make the process a lot easier, so maybe we can work to that, yes?
John, hasn't this been under the purview of the planning board, though? Because we haven't really been dealing with signs at all. Or is it the zoning board?
Yeah, it was the zoning board, but then I believe we shifted to the planning board for a sign plan review.
Also, under the current sign law, the new one that the supervisor referring to, there is a concept of a master sign plan for a new building, new sites, so that that's built in, and maybe what we have to do is take a look at, you know, making it more, the concept was that when you're reviewing a new building in the Architectural Review Board, that at least the size and locations of the sign where they would be affixed on a new building would be more or less shadowed out or, you know, located, and then I think the thought is, is to broaden that to the overall master sign plan, which would be all signs on a specific site, either a marquee sign, billboards, whatever, and then to weave that into the Architectural Review of the site, so that things would be more coordinated.
Is the other board going to be okay with our doing it?
Oh, sure, because right now, as you know, your authority is concurrent with the planning board as far as the whole process. You make your preliminary recommendation, it goes to the planning board, it's part of the planning board's public hearing, and then after the public hearing, you give your final approval, and that's rolled into the planning board approval, so, you know, won't be any problem with that.
Yes, Paul?
One other vision that I have down the road is, when we go through this new signing process, is that even when you look at the marquee signs anymore, they're multiple colors. You go to many of the villages in the New England area, even through the Midwest and various areas, all the signs are of one color, even the signs that belong to major corporations like K F C and McDonald, all the same, it's there.
Yeah.
But it's the color of which the marquee sign looks like.
Okay, we had an issue like that with Dunkin' Donuts some time ago, where we denied Dunkin' Donuts corporate colors, and I believe we were sued on that.
See, wait, wait, most of those communities, what they do is their ordinance allows them on their store premise, they can have their corporate signs with the colors, et cetera, on the marquee, in exchange for allowing more square footage and signage, you then regulate that on the marquee, they're all similar.
That's, that's ...
That can be balanced, but as the supervisor indicated, the prior, the law doesn't really go into the color issue, and the Supreme Court Justice that case was assigned to felt that if it's a national corporate logo, that's, you know, in this case, it was Dunkin' Donuts, that we'd be hard pressed to come up with a valid reason to force the change, but however, if in addition to their corporate logo sign on their store, you wanted to allow a marquee in the front with everyone's signage, and you said, "Okay, in exchange for that, you have to do it in a similar color," that probably could be done, yeah.
Okay, fine, I think that's basically what I was thinking.
Okay. What I've done with the sign, with the proposals to the sign law, giving it to our planner, and she's going to get back to us in a few weeks with her ideas on it, and I think we should sit down and talk about it a little bit, about the sign law, and see where it goes, I don't know if anybody on the board would like to sit on a sign committee, anybody would like to, please let me know. There was actually a book, I'm going to date myself, that way back when, remember when Bed Berle was here? This one? That's the one. That's the one. Go through that. Well, that's what we've asked them to go through, that's the handle.
This has come back 15 times, and we've been beating this around for 18 years.
Right, incidentally, we did come up with Bob Klein several years ago with a whole new booklet, and we're not quite sure whatever happened to that.
Okay, all righty, well, let's see if we can, I have no idea what it, where it could be, but let's see if we.
We were not supervisor at the time, so not to worry.
No, no, but let's, let's see if we can come up with something.
And Bob's, Bob's gone.
And Bob's gone. We'll see what we can do.
Somebody's got one.
All righty.
On the signage, I believe, wasn't there a document that came by, I'd say, about three years ago?
That was the new updated sign law that we, yeah.
Which I thought was rather comprehensive, and I think he commented on that, and then somehow, I don't know where it wound up, and we never saw a photo of it, I remember.
Well, I don't think it's been enforced.
Well, we've, we've found that there are some issues with it, which is why we're reviewing it now, so, but we'll get back to it.
Was it accepted?
What's that?
Was that document accepted?
Yes, it was.
It was, okay.
In 2011.
Oh, okay.
Wow. So, we've got some tweaks, as it is with any law that you adopt, there's always seemed to be something you need to change in it, so we've got a few things we're going to be looking at, and we'll get back, but I would like to see if we work something together, maybe on a, on a sign handbook, master sign plan.
Tom, the new pamphlet that we got from, I believe, the building department, front page, where it says that this chapter is consistent with Greenway connections, Greenway compact programs and guides, can you give us an idea what that is all about?
Sure, the Greenway compact was, I don't know, maybe 20 some odd years ago, all the communities in the Hudson River got to, Hudson River corridor and West Chester, and Duchess, got together, and the Greenway compact came up, and the state was behind implementing it. And basically, it adopted some standard, design standards and subdivision layouts. Often, you'll see when a site plan is referred up to Duchess County Planning, they'll come back and they'll recommend that the building should be closer to the road and the parking behind the building, that was a Greenway compact. And if you look in our zoning ordinance, there's actually a section which adopts on the part of the town of East Fish Gill, the Greenway compact, and asks that those planning recommendations be reviewed and discussed and incorporated as much as possible into the layout and design of things in the zoning ordinance.
Is it a state requirement, or is it just an agreement?
It started, all of these things along the river are usually through the New York State Department of State, and they, they like to see some coordination of development, et cetera, and then it kind of grew through the various municipal officials, associations, et cetera. And there is an actual document called the Greenway compact, which has those standards in it.
So the question is, do we have to adhere to their?
Well, right now, the town is a member of the Greenway compact, so part of the requirement is, is that you follow those guidelines, and the state has used that in the past to also, as a criteria, when you apply for grants, for any projects, for grants, they want you to be a member of that and to show that you're participating in it.
So if in case we do want to challenge those, we record if we want to?
Well, I don't think there's anything binding us to.
No, it's, it's just a planning conceptual, that you at least look at the concepts that are put forth, and it's not that it's a binding document, but it's conceptual.
And we do have those in our booklet for the zoning.
In the zoning ordinance, there's the reference that we adopted it, and then there is a separate document, which is the Greenway compact.
Any other questions for the ARB? Any questions for us from the ARB?
Just one comment.
Sure, Sue.
Mike Tompkins said to say hello to all of you, and I spoke with him today.
Oh, I appreciate that, Tom, Michael, I said hi. Michael, former judge, former town justice, chairman of the zoning board of appeals for many, many years, and really a good person. Also chairman of the Duchess County Industrial Development Agency, so Michael's a very good person, so.
A lost to our community.
What's that?
He's a loss to our community.
Yes, he is. When he moved out, it was truly a loss to us in Duchess County, so give him my best.
I certainly will.
Great, thank you, Sue. All right, I guess that's about it. I'd like to thank the ARB for coming in tonight, as I said, the board, my board just wanted to see the other boards, and we're going to continue this with other boards going forward, planning board, zoning board, buyer advisory board, and the CAC. So, thank you very much for coming, have your busy days. And Paul, thank you for coming. And we'll talk further on the sign ordinance.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Who won the game, Paul? Who won?
I don't know, it's a terrible game.
Hot walks.
He didn't go.
Fourteen to two.
Fourteen to two. An extra innings, they scored a lot in the extra innings. It was two to two, then they went over.
Twelve run nine. All righty, the next item on the agenda is to actually discuss the amendments to the sign ordinance. We brought this up a little while back, I know I asked the building department a few weeks ago if they would just give us their thoughts. A couple of things that we're going to see that is going to be a problem with our, with our sign ordinance as it is written today, is if you take a look at, say, the IBM West Complex site, which is 157 acre site, which is being subdivided, you're going to have different tenants on that site, and the signs that are allowed in our sign ordinance, I don't believe are large enough to give those tenants the signage that they should rightfully have. And I think there's some other large scale developments that are going to be looking for signs, rightfully so, that are larger for multiple tenants in industrial or large commercial sites. So I think that's something that we're going to have to consider, and I've asked our planner to take a look at that. One other thing, and I mentioned this to you, Tom, this is something that we could probably put in also. You know, I know over the years, recreation has asked in the, in the town park if we could have signs there.
Yes.
For companies, I would support. Advertisements, and it'd help support the sports, it'd help bring in money for field renovation or what have you like that. I thought maybe that would be something that we could consider putting into the sign ordinance also, allowing that sort of an activity. And, and again, what we got from the building department, their, their list of odds and ends that need to be looked at. So, just some things that I wanted to throw out there. Anybody have any thoughts on the sign ordinance? I mean, this is going to be a few month process, I don't see this being done in the next few weeks, it's going to take some work, but I think it's good to get started on it.
Yeah, I have some thoughts. A lot of small businesses have been complaining about the sign ordinance, and rightly so, but I think that we should put in the law some sort of relief.
Mm-hmm.
Where they can go to the zoning board, and based upon the zoning board's findings, maybe give them a variance.
Okay.
For something. You know, there's so many examples that I could give, but certain industries, golf courses, or, well, schools are exempt, but other large businesses that we only have one or two of in town that sometimes we don't fit inside the code because we just don't think of that.
Yeah.
A couple of other things, a lot of the businesses would like, and not to be added to the total lot area of the sign, is a changeable letters underneath the sign, so they could put up a special or something with, you know, interchangeable letters like we have outside here. But I mean, maybe we could come up with some sort of limitation, the size of it, but obviously, it's got to be of a size where people could read it, maybe a four inch letter or a five inch letter or something like that. And is, for marquee signs, is that added? Do, is that in there, Tom? Is it in the total square?
That would be one thing, that would be in addition to what's on the building.
In addition, okay.
That's something that would have to be evaluated on how many square feet.
And the, and the temporary signs, they're allowed six times a year, is that correct?
Correct, under the current ordinance.
And, and is there a specific time period for the six times a year? Are they allowed like two weeks or three weeks?
I think there's a time period they're allowed up.
Come up and come down.
Yeah, yeah, it was thirty days. Something within.
It wasn't thirty days?
Thirty, I think it was close to thirty.
There was thirty, they're recommending two weeks.
Two weeks, wow.
Well, that might be a little stringent, especially when it comes time for certain holidays and some businesses, you know, like to advertise more than.
Sure.
Fourteen days before the holiday.
Yeah, especially for the big holidays, absolutely.
Right. So, those, those were a couple of my thoughts.
Okay. Nick, would you jot them down for me?
Yeah, I, I have.
And what we'll do is, I'll send them over to the planner, and she's going to take a look at this, and all the suggestions, and absolutely, yeah. You know, this is again, what I say, when you enact the law, it's one thing, and then after it's in effect for a while, then you start to see, gee, I wish it'd been this or that.
Right.
Things that you can't consider when you're actually doing the law.
Exactly, like, one example was, an exempt sign is, like, if a business has a grand opening and they want to put a banner, that's exempt.
Right.
But if a business has been there for 10 years and they want to put up a 10-year anniversary sign, that's not, they have to go for a temporary sign permit. So maybe that could, you know, a few of those things could be looked at again.
Yeah, Paul, no, that's a great idea, that's a great idea. I think very, very helpful to the small business. Anything else? Anybody have any ideas on signs? Like I say, this isn't happening overnight, this is, can be a process, but I think it's something worthwhile, something we need to be done.
Well, my question is, I know we're doing a review of the signs, but basically, I know Mr. Pesavento mentioned he wants some kind of uniformity of signs throughout the Is that where we want to go? I mean, when we're discussing the signs, do we have actually an idea of what we want to put in place, so that, you know, once we look at these documents, we, we see what the goal is, and make suggestions according to that? When the sign ordinance was passed, there was a lot of flaws then, and, you know, the way it was passed, that put restriction on the small business community, I've had a lot of complaints. But, John, basically, what are we trying to accomplish? You're saying that there is some tweaks that need to be adjusted, but do we want to create a new environment for the signs, or?
Well, I, I think there's several issues that I heard tonight. One is, I think the Architecture Review Board is saying the marquee sign, which is something that we really don't have right now, would be an additional signage on a new plaza. And I think the gold was, even with this law, was, if you have a new plaza that says, has six or seven suites, that the location of the signs kind of be fitting into the architectural design of the building.
Of the building.
Number two, that they be of similar size, because a problem that we have is you all have six businesses, and you all have one that has an eight by 30 sign, and another has a two by four sign, and it throws off the whole perspective of it. And the third thing would be, is that, you know, when you're coming along 52, 376, or whatever, if there was a marquee that told you what businesses were in there, that would be a new thing that would be added into the new law, which would give greater visibility to people, because some of our plazas, you know, businesses are on the side of the building and everything else, so.
You don't know what's in there.
And the AMP plaza, they have very small strips, and they're very difficult to read.
But you don't know what's in there.
Correct.
So, no, I think, I think what he's talking about, uniformity, is the marquee sign, that's what you want to call it. All of those ones are going to be the same size, shape, and color, same color.
For each plaza, but it would be different for each plaza.
But on the building, yeah, each plaza would be different, the plaza development, if you've got a brown building, you probably want like a tan one. But on the building itself, I know what they want basically is the same size and shape.
And color.
No, I think color, color is leaning towards the marquee.
Yeah.
Because if you've got a lawyer's office, and a pizzeria, and a plaza, and he's the first guy in, or you're the first guy in there, and you pick red and green, he's going to look like a clown when he puts a lawyer's sign out front that says, with red and green. I mean, I disagree, individuality there, but the same size and shape, I think, is what he really means.
So these are the things we'd have to, you and half the board will have to ultimately decide, it's always contentious.
The other thing, the other thing on the marquees, if a store takes five stores.
Then they would get five times the size, yeah.
That's where we're talking about the formality of.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So you're going back to one small store with one store, one small sign, and then you have a big store with five stores, put a gigantic sign, so.
Well, the example would be AMP at Union.
Exactly.
AMP has the big sign because they're the big anchor town. But the other signs, I think everybody would agree, are too small, you know, yet if they were all put on that column, and there would maybe less signage within the plaza, everybody would probably be happy.
And you could write down 82 and see what was in the plaza. I mean, I think that the sign law is a start, and I think it's, it was a very big improvement over what we had, and just needs work. And I think it's something that we should get started on, so. And I could see a couple of issues that are going to arise in the future, so it's good to get started talking about it now. So, and if anybody has any thoughts, you want to email, email to, directly to the town planner, you could email to my secretary, she'll get him to the town planner, and I think we'll get to work on it. All right? All right? Okay. Tom? Good. Great, thank you very much. And fourth item on the agenda is this Shade and Sun rezone application, which is a little bit complicated. Tom, Shade and Sun Nursery located up on Stormville Mountain, was that pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes.
Okay, so, create a kind of a situation up there.
Yes, it's just that everyone knows it, I'm 52, across from the, at the intersection of Leetown Road. It was built prior to zoning as a nursery, a little bit of a contractor's yard, and several rental houses. And the problem over the years, since the original owner who operated it as a nursery no longer operated it, is that any proposal that's come into the town has faced several problems. First of all, most of the property is zoned residential. And secondly, with non-conforming use, if it's been not used for a period of one year or more, it loses its non-conformity, it reverses back to have to be residential.
Right.
So that created a problem. And also, in the B1 zone here, the lot itself wasn't big enough for any usual B1 business. So, the property owner has retained a, an engineer who has now sent in a proposal, a request to the town to consider rezoning the property, and obviously, this is for discussion purposes. They've come up with a concept here that would make most of it B1, which is our lightest business zone, it allows certain uses. The problem that I think we still have to work on, if we're going to go forward with this, is there are still some residential uses mixed in.
Mm-hmm.
Also, the board would have to consider the fact that it abuts a residential, not only residential zone, but a community that's already been built as single family homes, so you probably want to talk about North Office. But in the process, when a property owner files requesting a rezoning, what the board has the option to do, if it wished, is to refer to the town planning board, who would then take a look at the site itself, and perhaps make recommendations to the town board that you might find acceptable. And then if the property owner still wanted to go forward with it, it would require the town board to conduct a public hearing, take comment, and then decide if they wanted to rezone that property, so. But as you say, it's a very complicated thing because of the non-conforming use, the limited B1 and the.
Yeah.
R3, which is the largest residential district in the town.
Also access through.
There's, there would be access through the commercial to the residential, which is prohibited and consigned. So there's a lot of issues, but if we don't address it, the site may just continue to decay and become more than I saw, so.
Thank you. And so that we've sent this rezone application, basically, it looks like they're proposing all lots merged and zoned into B1, but obviously, that can't be with houses on, on the site. So I think we probably look at, well, I believe definitely send it over to the planning board, refer to the planning board for their review, town planner would take a look at it, and work with our professionals on it. Obviously, driving to residents through a commercial is a bit of a challenge.
Well, except that in other towns that are more built up, when this problem arises a lot.
Yeah.
Usually create what's known as a reuse special permit, and if the town board agreed with it and enacted it, the special permit would be applicable to the property and could resolve most of those problems.
Okay.
And it's designed for very unique situations.
Like this.
Like this, it would perhaps allow the access to the residential uses behind it, would allow those lots, even though they don't have frontage on 52. would allow those lots, even though they don't have frontage on 52.
Right.
Would maybe allow B1, but with a greater buffering area than was usually required, things like that. So, the planning board and the town planner can look at those things and give you some ideas.
Okay. Sounds good. I mean, it's just sitting there now. Remember the last gentleman that tried to make a go of it some years ago, and it only lasted about two or three years, unfortunately, so... So, that's what we have before us, and they have this application to us for a rezone. I think maybe, any questions from the board? I'd say that we will refer this at the voting meeting, refer this to the planning board and town planner for their review and...
Tom, if we put out, if we put out a special permit to kind of re-upgrade these non-conforming permits, would it be town-wide, or according to each case, we have to do it?
Usually, they're designed like to address a specific problem, so theoretically, it would only be applicable to that lot. Unless, I mean, if we can identify that there is others like it, then you can make it broad enough that it would be applicable to them. But right now, I think this is the one that we're all aware of.
Any questions? Good. So, we'll talk about the referral at the voting meeting. All righty. That's it for the discussion items on the workshop. Liaison reports on liaison to the official police department, really speaking with the police department. Nothing unusual, nothing really to speak of, everything is going very well. So, I really have nothing to read from the police department. Peter, highway department?
I've got one thing on the highway, a couple of things on the highway, just so everybody knows. They've been doing sweeping. There's two different types of sweepers going out. Right now, there's a broom sweeper that's doing the center of the roads, cutting down on the dust, pushing it to the sides, and then there's the other regular sweeper coming in, picking it up and moving the salt, the sand. They've been doing a lot of patching, believe it or not, this winter was actually tough on the roads. They're doing a little bit of tree work that they got to get into because they spent too much time plowing. Believe it or not, they've already started refilling the salt shed for next year. Hopefully, we don't need as much as that. And they're repairing, right now, the trucks that broke over the winter. So, they're getting them ready to put away for the summer. And the only other thing I got is cleanup day, which we had last weekend. I'd like to thank Hopple Hot Bagels for donating bagels, East Fishkill Provision for donating lunch to everybody that came and showed up and worked, Royal Karting for donating the dumpster, and everybody that showed up to actually help that day. I'd like to congratulate, for the first time ever. The entire town board showed up, all five people. I found Nick hiding in the woods, but he got there. And the East Fishkill Police Department, for the first time in twenty years, I saw the chief of police there, and he was guarding the gang that were down in the woods with all his men. He's keeping a close eye on them. And thanks to everybody that showed up to help. He got out of the woods.
Great. Thank you, Peter, and thank you for everybody who showed up to townwide cleanup. We appreciate it. Nick, planning and zoning?
Yeah, well, been a little quiet for planning and zoning, but it's going to get busy soon, so... They'll be ready for that. Our zoning board, we've received notice that we've lost our lawsuit against the cell tower application in Little Switzerland, so we are going to be going forward with our appeal, right, Tom?
It's on the agenda. I think we're going to have to vote on it at the voting meeting and see if we go forward.
So, we are going forward with the appeal.
Yeah, I believe so.
Hopefully, we all vote yes on that. And that's about it.
Okay. Quiet, quiet on the planning board, Paul.
Yeah.
Good, good. Tom?
Well, Recreation has not been quiet.
No.
Well, we ask everyone's patience for opening day, which is supposed to be this Saturday. The way Mother Nature has been, it's really up in the air right now. George and his crew at the rec department are working very hard to try to get the fields open and ready, and more importantly, safe for the kids to play on. Soccer has already pushed back their opening day to the following week, to April 18th. So, no soccer this weekend. The baseball parade is Saturday. As of right now, it's still going on. Eight-thirty lineup at Trinka Lane, and parade will start at nine. Over about, probably about a year or so, we've been talking about upgrading the fields at the rec. And recently, there was a discussion about large pools of water coming in around home plates in some of the fields, two and four in particular. And Scott was out there today, and I want to thank you for going out there. Because we had sort of worked out a deal where the town would provide some gutters, and a lot of the baseball and softball parents would volunteer and put them up. And Scott said today that we could probably avoid that, a little bit of grading, and was it MTK that went out there?
Yeah, yeah. Phil McCollum went out with MTK. That's a contractor who did some work for us last year on our fields. And I believe we're going to start tomorrow doing some shaping up to try to alleviate that problem.
Okay, that looks good, possibly?
We think that'll remedy the problem.
Okay, I would agree. Thank you. Appreciate it.
If I, am I just ask Scott, Scott, this is MTK, did they do our work up at Lee Town, or they did our work down here?
Yeah, they did primarily drainage at Lee Town.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And we've also, in the past, had them look over at Lime Killen, and I think even this, they were familiar with last year, just trying to look ahead at what we might do in the future.
Good, good, good. And they're going to be working starting tomorrow?
I believe so.
Excellent. Very good.
On the fields that are not too wet, anyway.
Right, right. Good.
Also, in soccer, for the past year or so, one of East Fishkill's soccer coaches, rec coach, Stephen Fells, has been in dialogue with an English Premier League team, the Tottenham Hotspurs, or for those of you who may not know him, Steve's an English fellow, so he says Tottenham. So, it's very important that we pronounce it correctly. He asked me for that today. This would be a very unique opportunity. Tottenham is looking to form ten super clubs in all of North America. Currently, they have one in Florida and one in California. And they're looking to partner up with East Fishkill Soccer here. It's, like I said, it's very unique, and it would be a great opportunity for any soccer player in the area. They would fly coaches over from London to train the coaches here as well as the kids. I talked to all the town board members, and everybody seems to be in agreement that this is a good idea. It's also positive, could reflect positively on the town as well as economically. You can bring in a lot of the kids from different towns, so... Right now, that's in the hands of the soccer league. We're all backing that. And one last thing, Arbor and Earth Day celebration, Saturday, April 25th, 2015, nine to twelve, at the town hall, and the theme, all about trees. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Marinaro, Special Park Districts?
Well, again, this year, we had an issue with smell. Elsal Lake, some testing was done, and I guess we had some positive test results for chloroform.
Well, we, the first test, it was total chloroform, Necoli. They came back, they had some positive hits, and then we did bacteroid tests as a follow-up, and we did have some positive hits. All that information has been posted on the website.
Right. So, this is the second year in a row that it is happening. We don't know what happens. It's usually the same time of the year. Last year was at the end of February. So, we see, maybe we'll, something will come of that. With some additional tests, maybe we'll get some results. And the community will be aware, especially the Elsal Lake community, as soon as we find out. We'll make them aware so that, you know, everybody's on board. One other request, I would ask, I know that the town supervisor put a request for a date for us to meet with the Elsal Lake Board. Some of us have responded. Possible date to meet with the Elsal Lake Board for their petition to the town. So, so that we could make that a definite date. Whoever could, please respond.
I think we have made a definite date.
Yeah. Well, the date is definite. I don't know. I don't know if all members are good with that date. It's actually May 7th.
It appears to be May 7th.
So, we're all good with that. Very good. That's basically it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, that's about it for tonight. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the...
Oh, can I add one thing?
Any comments?
Yeah. Just to add on to what Tom said about the Tottenham Spurs, this is a very unique situation. If, you know, you think you'll be interested in something like this, please tell the soccer club that you are interested. Tell your coach, so he could tell the representatives from the soccer club, and because they probably will need a vote on this.
Yes.
And one other thing, I'd just like to wish a happy birthday to Peter Cassidy tonight.
Ah, no kidding. When is it? When's your birthday? Today?
Right now, I'm missing it.
Happy birthday. You should be old enough to have a birthday cake or something like that.
Where's the party?
Thank you for coming out, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. The work session is now closed. Next town board meeting will be the voting meeting on April 23rd, 2015, at seven o'clock. Thank you very much. Bring them up.